Business.
I'm Xanu, Board Chair.
Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Vance Corning County Council.
Rachel Akonin, County Administrator.
And we have joining us in the room.
Patricia's intern.
Christopher Jacobs.
And online, Erica Milo, Board Recorder. Morning, Erica. And it looks like we have at least one guest, so welcome. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Did you have a chance to send out that one funding item?
I did. I did send it to the Commissioners to discuss. Yep.
So we do have one small funding item that will tack on to the end of the agenda under other, looking way ahead to Black History Month of 2025. And any other additions or changes? Hearing none, we'll consider the agenda approved. Are there any announcements today? I just want to acknowledge the fact that we are in our last day of mediation today with AFSMI, and I've got my fingers crossed that all goes well and that we come to an agreement. Next up is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes from February 15th and April 9th, goal-setting meetings. Are there any edits or changes to those minutes?
I don't have any.
I've moved to approve minutes.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Well, that gets us rapidly to new business, but I don't see Toby here with us.
She's here. She's coming down.
Okay. Well, we could move, switch to Sean. You're up. Come on up to the table.
Any Commissioners? So I wanted to do two things with you today. First is an update on the Simulatures Management Plan, and then the second will be the EMAX. I did invite Bailey to go out for that conversation, so hopefully she'll be there for that. Anyway, we had our first kickoff meeting on October 21st. I heard from many of you.
No, kickoff.
Wanted to have great feedback from the meeting, from many of the participants, so that was kind of cool. That was a lot of work, and I really appreciate Bailey's assistance on that one over the past few months. Wanted to also let you know as far as outreach, right after the meeting, I sent three emails. One to the participants of the task force. Second were people that Bailey and I spoke with that did, we were not at the actual meeting. And then just to let you know, we still have a lister from Ben County Talks Club, so sent that as well, and has just been phenomenal. We have had a couple of meetings to talk about other ways to reach out. She had this great idea and hope this can actually come to fruition, taking a couple of videos, one of which is mattresses down in Eugene, just to kind of showcase these little blurs really, I think are impactful to show exactly the impact we can have. So I just wanted to let you know all that. The, as far as the next steps, we have been meeting with our RRS since then. We had a couple of really big debriefs, and wanted to showcase with you what we're thinking of moving forward. One is to kind of finalize or be a little bit more succinct and upfront on the deliverables. So we have an overview of the Simulatures Management, just in the big picture. Use other maps there, but also on just the materials management, DEQ is doing a ton of stuff. Then listing success stories and case studies throughout the region, and not just here, but in the state and the country. Resources to support future SMMP efforts. Again, DEQ is doing a lot of things. EPA has more than $1 to be giving to these kind of initiatives, so looking forward to seeing how we can take advantage of those ones. Key findings, and then recommendations moving forward. So those are the explicit desire deliverables coming in as of June 30th, when the funding. Want to stop there if there was any questions or comments?
I remember a year and a half ago, when we were in DC, we got toured around by Michael Skipper, our CFM person, and always would visit the DOT, but nothing was really new to talk to a person or two at EPA, just for what you said. There are dollars, there are dollars there, and we should be aware of that.
Yeah, having CFM, and then Amanda and Elaine at DEQ. You heard them speak there on food, at built environment, saying there's tons of money out there for us to, if we want to take advantage of that.
And just want to make sure we're taking advantage of our government relations, folks.
Absolutely, and we'll get to that.
We used to have lobbyists, now we have government relations.
Euphemisms. Yes. So those are some, those are the desire, I'm just kind of going through the emails of yours then. So then.
Can I add just one thing? I know it's not part of the deliverable for this particular, for this sustainable materials management plan process, but I want to reiterate that I do think it's also important that we have a Benton County plan.
We're going to get to that at the end. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Completely in agreement. So as far as meeting with RRS, we have a really nice, well, more than an hour meeting on where we're going to go from here. So we identified some, what are we doing in the next steps? One, we're thinking of having a very quick, like an hour or so, nothing big, five-hour stuff that we had. But just to kind of check in with the task force in early December, again, this is all on the canvas of whatever happens today, and so to see how we can, just making sure the momentum is moving forward, and we're not losing, because we, it was nice, we had a lot of momentum moving forward, and so we don't want to lose that. So we have, we went back and forth in identifying some subgroups. So we identified five, and we're, again, this is an exploration, I think is locked in. The process would be, we send an email to the task force, what are your thoughts? Come back. So one of them is government authority issues. That kind of came up, but it's going to be really, really big. This is several layers. We have counties that franchise, cities have them. It's not just Benton and Corvallis, it's Marion and Salem.
Everyone.
How does, how does that even work? That's going to be a big one, and to see, Jeff in Landland was talking about, can we insert similar language in all the agreements coming forward? This is very, very complicated on a layer, layering issue, and worthy of a harsh conversation on how do we all work together, considering it's, there's zero communication, very little communication and collaboration moving forward. So that's one. What are some of the products and issues not being addressed? We have a lot of things, like RMA, mattresses, batteries, things moving forward. What's not being addressed? Then the specific topics are food, organics, built environment. But kind of getting to what you just talked about, Commissioner, we do need to address the disposal and solid waste system as well. You saw the great map, the great analysis that RRS did. How does that feed into a Simulatures Management? What are the opportunities, equity, economic? How does that incorporate as a region? So those are some of the potential topics. Didn't know if that, can I do that?
Those are still fluid, maybe you add one, subtract one, or combine two.
Right. We wanted to lean into the energy of DEQ, especially when they're managing this day one, have seen they want to be a part of this, see the opportunities, so why keep them on the bench?
Yeah, absolutely.
So those are the two that really going forward, and then more the process, again, whether it's the jurisdictional and government issues, what are some of those operational challenges that are presenting this as a regional plan?
Yeah, that government authority and systems level might be able to be merged. But I think that that is critical. Without that, I don't think that we're going to make much progress.
And, you know, then you have Metro, which is this kind of weird, just kind of a, it's not multi-jurisdictional, but having its authority, but no. How's that, and can we do that more than authority? I think I shared, there's only two, not contention, but it was really interesting conversations. One, does this region want an authority? Some did, some didn't. And then the other one was, when do we bring the private sector? And that was also 50/50, most of the time. So conversations to be had moving forward. So we talked, so those were some of the work groups. Then we started to have a great conversation about kind of matrix, like of what questions does each one going to have? I thought BCTT had a, at many top stretch, had a similar approach, and that I thought was positive. What are the questions, and how do you just kind of walk through it? So what are the definitions? What are the acronyms? What are the challenges in each of those subgroups? What are the policy opportunities, funding opportunities? How does this all relate? Or the data, infrastructure, equity issues, is it politically viable, those kinds of things? So kind of a checklist for each work group to walk through. So again, on June 30th, we have some sort of a framework, a roadmap moving forward, so we're not just going to start to move. And again, that's also very fluid, as you just said, Commissioner. We're also need, this needs to be economically feasible. So far, Benton County has footed the bill. How do other jurisdictions also come to the table, maybe? And how do we start moving forward, both politically, economically, fiscally, and to make sure that this has light moving forward? Those are some of the, again, kind of getting to the, to the framework of us moving forward. We have another meet, we have another meeting scheduled for Thursday, we'll see how that goes, to continue moving that forward, and so you'll start hearing more of this in December. We, if there's no, the next step is the amending the current contract with RRS. If we go back to last spring, the original contract, we did need a facilitator because we had Steve Chase. Steve Chase, he recognized that retirement doesn't suck. It's kind of nice, so rather than dealing with this, continuing with his retirement. So we had to amend that. You saw Liz Stark, who did a great job, and is a leader in this community. So we were working with Gabby to extend that to June 30th, and then be more explicit in having her facilitate. Currently, we are planning for three more task force meetings, which will be larger, and then up to 20 subgrouped meetings. Not sure if everyone's going to meet every month. I can see where the jurisdictional one may or may not be shorter, whereas the food might be longer. Again, this is very fluid, kind of moving forward. So that would be the extension of the contract. Another thing is, one of the deliverables was for RRS to reach out and having had interviews with some of the experts, well, that's what Bailey and I did, so that saves some funding for their responsibilities per the contract. So that can be shifted to any research and technical assistance, and so that, then we, it's all kind of one day kick. And so I just got an email from Gabby this morning, we're working out, negotiating, discussing how to move forward.
And so the meeting that you referred to that may occur on Thursday is with RRS?
Yeah, and just to continue, the deliverables, this is moving forward, and the Liz is part of that as well, so. I just, so let's just explain to you all, this is the progress moving forward to June 30th. We still have funds, and we'll get to this after the RRS and the P conversation. We still have funds if there's additional technical assistance, or mapping, or research. I did want to share, one of the members for NRA, Cindy, she was at the table that I'm sitting at. She's a graduate student, and so she'll be doing a research project, an internship with us, and looking at some of the, so it's kind of nice to bring, be bringing in a research component, an OSU student, NRA, so.
Is this Cindy that's, was intern?
Yep.
Cindy Tamlin, who was at our table at the kickoff.
Not Cindy, Cindy.
Cindy, pretty is climbing, actually, now. Apparently, a whole bunch of Cindy's.
I did not know that.
It was, she is, she had a fellowship over the summer in the GORs, talking specifically about waste management. So this is, she's in environmental studies, so. Stars aligning. Before we get into solid waste, I wanted to ask a board of the questions on the update on the SMMP process.
It seems like the general tone is positive. We had the one meeting that we were all at, so we haven't had any drop-offs or.
No. If anything, people have started to knock at the door, how can they be part of this? So I see that moving forward. And when I sent that email to the, who, the individual who we interviewed, but were not at the task force, so please keep me informed as we move forward.
Well, yeah, I second the notion of momentum and navigating through the holidays, so that early in the next year, we're, we're rolling. Six months could evaporate, especially with the large group.
And disparate, and we're regional, geographically, demographically, all kinds of different things. And intentions might be elsewhere, starting in mid-January. So that's the SMMP. We did, Bailey and I wanted to come to you and say, getting to your, Commissioner, your earlier comment, we are exploring the pursuit of a Benton County solid waste management plan. That kind of came up a couple times in the kickoff. So we do have funding within the 400,000 we originally allocated to complete the SMMP task, but at least to kind of get a momentum or an exploration into what that would look like for Benton County. And again, this is solid waste. We've never had one, as far as I know, there were, Daniel running his, so there were some issues back in the 70s, files that they looked at, but it was never designed to be a solid waste. And so we just had some initial conversations of what that would kind of look like. When I set expectations clear, we don't, we have funding to look at that, and again, in the coming weeks, depending on what happens today, we really wanted to aggressively pursue that option before January 30th.
I would just add, my intent is to complete a memo that hopefully will arrive to you at some point, that outlines some options for dealing with the long-term disposal challenges ahead. My plan is to submit that to Patricia today, and then I'll let Patricia pass it up the food chain.
They may even want to present it down the line.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And as a teaser, I, things that were impossible are going to be legitimate options moving forward. When we have pressure, it's amazing what can actually occur. I was, me, Brandon, at OSU, and Scott, and we talk about pre-COVID and post-COVID. Pre-COVID, no one talked about telework, and these guys were just laughable. What was laughable in the fall of 2019 was policy on March 16th of 2020. Similarly, now the Covance is shutting down, we have a Horizon Coffee Bureau. Some of the things that we haven't really thought of as options are going to be options. And I think that Liz did a great job of looking at what some of those options are, to be legitimately looking at those today and not on December 31st of 2036. We have some issues here, so I keep coming back to what Paul said in Newport. 10 years is tomorrow, if we're looking at these options.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to that.
Other questions on those? Toby and we'll come back for.
Okay.
Well, just congratulations on a good story.
Yes, yeah, it's ecstatic, and that's what we keep hearing from some of the people.
That's great, and I do hope it's possible to have a quick meeting in December to talk about task force committees, so that. Move ahead.
That's true. Thank you.
Knowing that there is uncertainty in the world. Toby, welcome.
Sorry, this meeting started, the preliminary part of this started much quicker than I was.
Yeah, it went very fast.
Thank you, Sean and Bailey for being able to.
It's not early.
Okay. So today's, is it? Sorry, Toby, less than county, thank you for.
Do you want to turn your mic on? I just realized it was off.
How's that? Ready?
For the.
It's for the online.
Oh, okay.
Sean, you're going to have to repeat everything you said. Sorry.
Yeah, re-present.
Was it off the whole time?
I think so, yeah. Thank you for presenting first anyway.
Okay, so today's conversation is about the pre-implementation compliance measures for, so, sorry, Endangered Species Act and the National Flood Insurance Program Integration, Oregon. We have about a whole alphabet worth of acronyms at this point. I'm trying not to use them, but if I mess up, I apologize. So are we?
Yeah, it's, I'm having a little technical difficulty with sharing.
There.
I have to make sure she's.
Not yet.
Here we go, okay.
Okay. Okay, so pre-implementation compliance measures, PICOM for short. Each community is required to pick a PICOM by December 1st. This is all part, this is one prong of the integration of the Endangered Species Act in the National Flood Insurance Program in Oregon. So today, where am I aiming this?
Just aim just in this panel.
Sometimes you have to turn it off and back on again. Man, I could have a second job. We've been watching this forever. It's the same problems over and over again.
It is, yeah.
And it's not for lack of staff.
Oh, no, it just.
They tested.
Okay. We're all set. Okay. So today, we're talking about kind of a quick overview, important dates, what's affected, and implementation options, and then a discussion about where the board would like, what direction the board feels is appropriate for response to FEMA. So the decision deadline is December 1st. The, just as a quick reminder, the goals of the, of the biological opinion and National Flood Insurance Program for this project are flipping habitat protection. Mostly, the, it's trying to ensure continued habitat viability for identified endangered species in special flood hazard areas in each of the Oregon plan areas. It's kind of along the north portion of Oregon, northwest, and then west coast. There's about 200 and some odd communities that are within the plan implementation area. Guiding development away from sensitive habitat areas, ensuring development does not cause additional damage to endangered species, protected endangered species habitat areas in flood hazard, in the mapped flood hazard area, and strengthening systems of accountability and implementation for the, for the new requirements. The categories, and I may have used an old term on the first category. It's been being adjusted over the course of this. So it started out as floodplain storage, then it went to undeveloped state space. It may now be called developed space. But the idea is how much space above the ground and below the expected water elevation during a flood event is being occupied by some kind of structural development, or fill, or something like that. So that's one of the key habitat functions, is maintaining that space open and available for floodwater storage.
Sorry to interrupt, what's showing on line is not what's showing on the slide up there. This is still on the first slide. It's in, it's not in.
We'll just pretend this is Monday.
No, it feels like a Monday.
Okay. Do you want to be on slide three, Toby?
Yes, please. May.
Does it match in audience?
No.
What is it showing?
It's showing that we're still on slide three on the meeting. Okay.
Is it moving now?
It's still in.
Still presented.
But yes, other than that, it's the right one now.
I'm going to move down four. Is it moving?
Yes. Yes.
Are we, yeah, okay. Okay, so the second key habitat function is water quality. That's an area measurement, so how much ground area or ground surface is impacted by being converted to an impervious surface, so something that water can't soak through and be stored in the ground. And then the third key habitat function is riparian vegetation. That's measured by the number of, in this instance, the number of trees that are six foot in diameter at breast height. How many, how many existing trees are being removed from the area? Because, six, thank you, six inches, yes, six inches, six feet would be really large, would be down redwoods. So six inches diameter at breast height. And so the idea there is that trees along riparian corridors provide shade and improved habitat function for the endangered species of concern, for species of concern. So is that moving on, online?
Not yet.
Okay. Very frustrating.
It indicates I'm sharing. I don't know why it's moving.
Does it move if you change the slides instead of Toby?
Let's see, so if I'm choosing what to share, I choose the presentation, I share. Okay, and we're on slide four?
Yeah, the one, yeah.
Okay, I'll move directly from here.
Okay.
Is it moving, Nancy?
We're on slide four.
So it's not moving.
Still on slide four.
Okay.
Maura?
Yes, Erica?
Just checking, is the dongle from the clicker in the desktop computer?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Let me move it from, I'll try to have the USB cord either edition four. I'm trying.
Is it switching now?
No. This is your PowerPoint. This is your PowerPoint in the packet?
It didn't show up in there.
Okay. So I was going to say.
I submitted it, but it didn't show up.
I thought it was in there.
There's a PowerPoint from FEMA, but I didn't see the, I didn't see this one in there.
Will we be able, do we, can we provide this after? After, yes.
Can we upload this after? Yeah, I submitted it with the, with the agenda checklist. So, yeah, 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 there's a PDF of it in there.
So if you're watching this online or want to see it or watching it later.
They can go.
Access it.
Yeah. Does that work for the commissioners? In the interest of time, I think that's a good idea.
I'll go to five. It's moving? Yeah, I didn't do anything different. So, okay, so I'm going to go from my current slide. Does it move now?
Nope.
Oh, annoying.
Yeah, I think.
It's something about the presentation view. Toby, you want me to just go off of the PowerPoint?
Sure. Yeah, I can just say next slide. Yeah.
Yeah, we can do.
Yeah, I can do that. So we should be on slide four. So timelines and project areas. And then if you want, switch it to the next slide. I did borrow a few slides from FEMA. You'll see those in here. Yeah, that one, just because they've already set them up with infographics and stuff. So this one is just, you know, recap. We're at about year 15 on this project, started in 2009. There's a couple of key dates in there for 2016, 2018. 2019 to 2021 FEMA and DLCD partners are working on the 2021 Oregon NFIP, sorry, National Flood Insurance Program Endangered Species Act Implementation Plan. 2023, there's a notice of intent for environmental impact statement published. And actually, if you go to the next slide, so that, that notice of intent for the environmental impact statement falls under the second category, there are cooperating agency partners. So this, this total project is kind of broken down into three main categories. There's the pre-implementation compliance measures, which we're talking about today. We'll need a decision and implementation due by December 1st. Coordinating agency participation. So we've been presenting here and there over, over the course of that. That's Benton County has entered into an agreement with Benton County to review draft pre-decisional documents for that environmental impact statement as that's being developed and provide comments to FEMA. We just received four technical reports on that within the last few weeks. And with response timelines, they're pretty quick. I'm hoping to be able to present mid-December, just a quarterly update. And so I can include that in there if that, if that works out. And then the third part is long-term implementation. So once the pre-implementation compliance stuff is taken care of and FEMA has identified their final long-term implementation plan and gotten that approved through NOAA Marine Fisheries, then each community will be required to implement those measures. The goal is for the current pre-implementation compliance measures to be at least very similar to that final process. Next slide, please. Another slide from FEMA. So this is specific to the pre-implementation compliance measures. We've got August through, through December. Communities are, are reviewing and deciding, reviewing the options for implementing these pre-compliance measures and deciding which, which option is going to be the best fit for their community. FEMA has stated that communities are expected to begin implementing one of the three compliance measures by December 1st. And yeah. I'll get to that in a minute. So by December 1st and then start collecting data on the decisions issued for development in the floodplain by January 31st, this coming January 31st. And then by the following January 31st, so 2026, communities will be expected to use FEMA's reporting tool to report on a variety of data. And we'll go into that a little bit more in a minute. July 31st of 2025 has been identified as the deadline for having a model ordinance in place, if that's the, the option that a community chooses. So those are kind of the, the quick key dates. And I mean, you guys have seen that in the, the technical reports and things like that. Next slide, please. I also provided in the, in the agenda checklist packet, just copies of some recent key, key communications. So letters to FEMA from Oregon Senator and members of Congress, Governor of Oregon, the impact statement article prepared by Association of Oregon County's Legislative Affairs Manager, the FAQ sheet prepared by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And then the other bit that's not included in the packet is just that FEMA has been pretty active in the last couple of months in terms of providing workshop opportunities for communities to attend, staff of communities to attend. They have, they've provided in-person workshops from middle of October to the end of October, and then online workshops from the end of October to continuing through the 19th of November. So those are geared towards the model ordinance adoption option and the permit-by-permit habitat assessment option. They're half-day workshops. I was able to go to, to an in-person one in Albany and a refresher just last week. And they've been incredibly helpful. The information has been changing a little bit over time as new, you know, as questions are, are being asked. Per usual, there's a lot more questions at the very beginning. And then as the workshops continue, the questions die down and the, and the workshops get a little bit shorter. So there's some really great information that's been being given there. Next slide. So next topic is floodplains in Benton County. And the, if you'd switch it again too. So this is just to give, this map is just to give a general idea of where flood hazards are in Benton County to, you know, have that in mind. The light blue shading is, is mapped special flood hazard area. We've got the whole county is a large one. And then each of the incorporated cities is shown in a smaller tile. And then we'll go through a few numbers and come back to this real quick. So next slide. So Benton County has, about 14% of Benton County is mapped as special flood hazard area. That is the highest percentage for a county of any of the, the counties within the, the Oregon plan area for this project. I haven't seen the numbers on cities. I was surprised, yeah. The next highest counties are Columbia and Multnomah. Those are in the 12% range. The, the actual, I mean, I've, I rounded it to whole numbers. So our actual percentage is about 13.5%. But so Columbia, Multnomah came in at just over 12%. Yamhill, Washington, and Polk are in the eight to nine percent range. And everybody else is lower than that. So I, it jumped out at me as I was reviewing one of those technical bulletins or technical reports. And, and I just thought that was interesting. We've got about 59,000 acres of, of our 434 acres for the county that's mapped as flood hazard. The, the incorporated cities in Benton County, so Curvallis, Albany, portion of Albany, Adair Village, Monroe, Fallama. Those just collectively, those are about 14% of, of the mapped floodplain for those total cities is in, is mapped as floodplain as well. The side boxes there, unincorporated communities. So these are officially recognized unincorporated communities. Alpine, Alsey, Bell Fountain, Greenberry, and Wren. Those are still under county floodplain and land use management. But just putting those up there for a, you know, kind of a general idea of what, what those communities are looking at. And then incorporated cities. So each of those incorporated cities manages their own land use and floodplain regulations. So it's more just for informational purposes, so you can see what they're looking at. Fallama's got about 21% of their community is mapped as flood hazard. And Albany, that's just the portion of Albany, in the North Albany area that's inside city limits. So I don't, I didn't check for. And by the way, the numbers that you'll see today were put together by Webster Slater, one of my coworkers. He did a great job, and the maps also. Just going to shout out for that. Okay, so next slide. And then that's just, you know, a quick look at the, the map again in case it's, you know, having seen the numbers in case that's helpful. Let's see. Okay, so next slide. These numbers are, on this slide are going to be related to acreage amounts and, and tax lots and broken down by the type of land use zone. So resource zones are going to be exclusive farm use, forest conservation, multipurpose agriculture, floodplain agriculture. So we've got about 88% of our flood hazard area is mapped as, is, is zoned for resource use. About one and a half percent is zoned for residential use. The, the percentages on the, on the right-hand column under each, where each zone type category is broken down by specific zones, that's the percent of the, the mapped, sorry. So that's the percent that, so if you look at resource zone where it says 51,700 acres, and then you go over to the table on resource zones, 93% of that 51,700 acres is, is zoned for exclusive farm use. 4% is zoned for forest conservation. Yeah, so the, the biggest category of land that's in, that's mapped as flood hazard is resource zones. And of that, it's mostly farmland. So just some, some interesting factor, you know, like facts for when we're thinking about impacts. Of the residential zones, about one and a half percent of the flood hazard area is mapped as residential zones. And of those residential zones, most of that is, is rural residential as opposed to urban residential or village residential. The industrial, that's less than half a percent of total not flood hazard. It's split fairly evenly between rural, urban, and agricultural, industrial. Commercial zones, this, we don't, we don't have a lot of commercial zoning. And of that, only 10 acres is mapped as flood hazard. So 90% is rural, commercial, urban, urban, commercial, urban, industrial. Those are inside of urban growth boundaries. So. And then for the other category, most of that is mapped as open space as opposed to public, public or special, special use. Next slide. Structures and floodplains and buffers. So the first column that you're seeing where it says floodplain structures, that's the number of structures that are in each category of land use in the flood hazard area. I don't have a total number of structures for, for the county because there's a lot of them. But so just within the mapped flood hazard area, we're looking at, at, you know, 2,700 structures in resource zones, 600 structures in residential zones. The addresses columns, so we don't have, our GIS data isn't sophisticated enough yet to identify specific dwellings or structures as dwellings or commercial structures. So we use address points because typically addresses are only given to houses or places of business. So the, there's a total, for example, of the resource zone, there's a total of 1,100 address points assigned to land in Benton County. And of that, 540 of those are within the flood hazard area. So same with residential, 400 total, 160 of those are in flood hazard areas. So this is just to give kind of an idea of magnitude for, for what we're dealing with here. The next two, the two tables on the right there. The first one is structures. This is broken down by the number of structures in the floodplain. And then within that, the number of structures that fall within the 170-foot riparian buffer zone that we've talked about a number of times so far. And the, and then also within the 50-foot setback. So you'll see the numbers kind of decrease as you go from left to right. And same with address points. Any questions about any of those?
No, I am really thrilled though that we have the GIS expertise and the system to be able to do this kind of analysis.
Yeah.
Thank you to you and to Webster and to the GIS support book.
Okay, next slide. We are going to, so done with the overview of pre-implementation compliance measures. And next slide. So this is another slide borrowed from FEMA. You've seen these dates before. The key things on this slide that I wanted to point out are the request. So when we start needing to collect data, we'll be collecting data on the amount of fill that we authorize, the compensatory storage that's required. So like if somebody adds fill, how much are they going to need to, how much of the property are they going to need to remove or excavate to compensate for that? And the amount of new impervious surfaces in the floodplain. Areas of cleaning and clearing and grading, trees removed that are greater than six inches in diameter, track, tracking acres disconnected or from or reconnected to the floodplain and mitigation provided. So those are the things that we will be required, each community will be required to document and submit through FEMA's reporting tool, which is still under development. They're working on finalizing that, but they've got a couple of other things that they're needing to prioritize first. And then. Yeah, so I think. Okay, next slide. So options, we have option one is adopt an interim model ordinance. Option two is performing permit-by-permit reviews. And option three is prohibiting all development in flood hazard areas. We've had a group of staff members working on evaluating, you know, projects and, and the, the pre-decisional documents from FEMA for the cooperating agency status. The PICOM, pre-implementation compliance measure information. So community development, public works, and natural areas and parks. We've been meeting on this for, I think, almost a year now. So based on the information we've seen and the information that we've discussed in previous board meetings, that the direction so far has been that the prohibit all development in flood hazard areas isn't really going to, to work for Benton County. So really, we're looking at adopting an interim model ordinance and then following that up with adopting a final model, model ordinance or doing a permit-by-permit review option using the Habitat Assessment Guidance Document that FEMA provides. When I went to the, the workshops in Albany and prior to that as well, it, it's become very evident that the difference between the model ordinance adoption option and the permit-by-permit reviews is really minimal. And, and that's what this second table on here is, is showing. So based on input from county council and also hearing what other jurisdictions councils are, are stating, the permit-by-permit process also requires an ordinance adoption. When these three options were, were provided by FEMA, their understanding was that the model ordinance adoption or choice would require an ordinance adoption. The permit-by-permit choice, they, they thought would not require an ordinance adoption. So the intent was to provide something that didn't require communities to adjust their, their code. What they found over the course of the discussion is that it also requires an ordinance adoption. And then the prohibiting development was a separate, separate issue. So both, both of the two options we're considering require changing our ordinance. They both require that a project has to comply with the no net loss standards for those three key habitat functions. They both require that the applicant submits documentation to show that their project will comply with those no net loss standards. And an application form would be helpful for both of those, those options. And staff review and approval of the information submitted is required for both options. So really, the key difference is what language are we putting into our code? Are we putting the specific model ordinance language from FEMA into our code? And if that language changes between now and final implementation, then we'd have to go back through and revise it or just stay stuck with what's in our code? Or are we putting language in our code for the permit? Or are we putting language in our code for the permit-by-permit process where we say this, all projects in the flood hazard zone have to comply with the no net loss standards, refer to the FEMA's Habitat Assessment Guidance Document to, for this process and to identify what you need to do, not specifically like that, but that's the general idea. And that way, if that criteria or language there changes, we don't have to change our code to keep up with that. I don't expect that once the Habitat Assessment Guidance Document is finalized, I don't expect it to change very much. Right now, it's fairly thick, it's pretty, I mean, it's not incredibly dense, but it's based on a different understanding of what it takes to demonstrate no net loss for a project. And FEMA is in the process of completely revamping that document based on a revised understanding of what information an applicant would have to submit. So initially, the understanding was that for a Habitat Assessment document, you would need to hire a biologist or a qualified professional, and the definition of qualified professional was fairly narrow, and have them prepare a whole packet of information for you to submit with your application. The biggest takeaway from the in-person Albany work session was that they had recently realized that that's not necessarily true, that now the thought is that a property owner could be considered a qualified professional. They're leaving that definition of qualified professional up to each individual community to determine what's acceptable for that community. But a property owner could say, because it's really a question of numbers, how many, how much space above the ground and below the floodwater elevation am I occupying with my project? How many square feet of ground am I covering with a patio or a driveway or whatever else I'm building? And how many trees am I taking out? And then responding to that, what am I doing to offset those impacts? And so it may not be necessary to hire a professional to prepare that information for you, you know, as the person who lives on the property, you may be the best person to prepare that information, and if you choose to do that yourself, then what's to say you can't, you can't do that? And so based on that revised understanding, they're revising the Habitat Assessment Guidance Document that they're also providing. So one other option that's not listed on here, that's been floated by at least one community, is requiring a, an applicant to turn in a statement of no take prepared by a qualified professional or biologist or somebody. So the, the information from FEMA is that this project, the Environmental, I'm sorry, Endangered Species Act compliance, for this project requires a demonstration of no net loss. It does not require a demonstration of no take.
So focus on the habitat rather than the critters.
Yes. So that could potentially be an option, maybe, to show that there's no impact to a, to the endangered species that are being protected, but the focus of this is really on what you're doing to the habitat and these three key functions, not, there's no requirement to demonstrate no take.
And no take is more difficult to prove.
Yeah. So just pointing that out is, you know, the idea has been floated. It's out there as a thought. It's not one of the listed options, and there is kind of a key distinction between no net loss and no, no take demonstration. What else? So, next slide, please. So discussion and next steps, you go ahead and go to the next slide. So before we, questions, thoughts, comments? So before we kind of get into that, and I'm, the recommendation of the group that I've been working with is to do the permit-by-permit option because it requires less code adjustment on our part. We will still have to adopt something for the final language. It allows a little more flexibility. We do need to respond to FEMA with our decision by December 1st as a county agency. FEMA also understands that most communities are not going to be able to implement permit-by-permit, which is the default option, even if you choose model code ordinance or model code ordinance, by December 1st because we won't be able to have it in our code that fast. It takes time to actually do the outreach and to have the language vetted and to get it adopted into our code. So their direction or communication to communities is tell us which option you're choosing by December 1st, tell us how long it's going to take you to implement that option, and tell us what you need in order to be able to implement it. For the recommendation from our group to choose the permit-by-permit option, what we would need to be able to implement that is a finalized Habitat Assessment Guidance Document. And six to 12 months from the time that document is finalized to be able to implement it. If we have code language set up, vetted, approved by Department of Land Conservation Development, knowing that this is, meets the Oregon requirements for land use regulations in place, we can quickly move an ordinance through in potentially six months, but really, in order to do a good job on it, we would need at least 12 months. So trying not to hem the county into a timeline that may be difficult to meet, my recommendation would be to state that we need to have the Habitat Assessment Guidance Document finalized and then 12 months from that timeframe to be able to implement that. So, sorry, I'm looking at my notes, seeing if I missed anything. Common community concerns so far is that I've heard our ability to implement the pre-implementation compliance measures, timeframe, staffing, data needs. The ordinary high water line definition has come up quite a bit recently, and the lack of mapping of where that, that boundary is because you have to measure 170 feet from that boundary. And so if you have several properties between the ordinary high water line and where your property is, where is that line? You know, if you're within 100 feet, it's not such a big deal. If you're at 160 feet or 180 feet, you need to know exactly where that is, both from on the staff side of that conversation, when we're looking at applications that come in, and knowing whether or not to apply this, these regulations, and from the property owner applicants' side of the conversation. Another topic is clear and objective standards and definitions. So there are quite a few words in the model ordinance that have a lot of common meanings, and so we really need to have those words defined and clearly explained, what we're talking about. So fish ingress and egress, what kind of fish are we talking about? Oregon land use laws are pretty, pretty clear about the meaning to be clear and objective standards so that we all know what we're talking about. Yeah, so thoughts?
I have some questions, I'm trying to juggle this all in my head.
Right.
Well, okay, so going back to the percentage of our special floodplain area, is that, do you think that is because of just our unique topography, or is it just that you do such a good job and, or are other communities maybe missing some of their wetlands?
No, so the mapping is done by FEMA. I think, I think it's mostly based on topography. You know, the county is along the west side of the Willamette River.
Yeah.
We've got a nice wide open area there. We've also got the Marys River and just south of that, it's pretty flat and open as well.
Okay.
And both of those areas are primarily zoned for farm use because farming occurs, you know, farming is a good use and floodplanes help typically with farm operations.
Okay, thank you. So if we were to go the permit-by-permit route, or the, what is it called?
Permit-by-permit, Habitat Assessment.
So is that, is that still a temporary, is that like the stopgap until the more official the plan or?
Yes. Yes, so it's kind of been going back and forth. So right now, at this moment, permit-by-permit is only an option during the pre-implementation, like as, only available as a pre-implementation compliance option. It was available initially, we saw, we saw it in the PATHC guidance document for the environmental impact statement, so those pre-decisional documents that we've been reviewing as a cooperating agency. It was thrown in there as an idea for communities to choose that as an option. It's been taken out currently, but it may go back in. So things are still being finalized. There was, I think, people had seen permit-by-permit in the Washington Biological Opinion Implementation, and it seemed fairly onerous. This revised, recent revision to the understanding of what it takes to show compliance and that it doesn't have to be hiring somebody has, I think, adjusted those thoughts.
Okay.
And so it may be that it's added back in if people are, you know, if communities find that that's really an option that they like.
So hypothetically, could we actually, could we implement both and let people choose which path they want to go? Or does FEMA want us to choose one or the other? Like, I know it would be, you know, two ordinances probably, but that way, you know, Mr. Smith comes in and says, how do I do this? You could say, well, you can either follow our model code or we can do a permit-by-permit. Which one would you prefer?
I think it's, it's a possibility, but at the end of the day, both processes require the exact same, they have the exact same standards, they have the exact same requirements for documentation that you have to submit. So it's really just a question of, do you want the words spelled out in your code the way that FEMA has provided them? Or do you want a statement in your code that says, see this FEMA document, but the requirements are the same?
Okay.
Regardless of which.
Is there one version that's more staff-intensive on our part?
No.
Or one version that's easier, more straightforward for community members to follow?
We don't have a lot of flexibility to adjust the language from FEMA if we adopt it into our model code.
But like, I'm just, yeah, I don't, I've never, you know, applied for a permit in a floodplain, so I'm just trying to figure out, you know, when someone comes in and what forms do they fill out, et cetera, so it'd be pretty much the same experience.
Yes, yeah. So the goal would be, we'd have a, so we have a floodplain development permit application form right now. We would just add to that and step them through the required information. So, you know, standard information is name and address and property location, right? And what do you want to do for your project? And give us a site plan that shows what you're doing. Added to that would be, how much, how much volume are you occupying above the ground with your project? How much space are you, on your ground are you covering with what you want to do? And how many trees are you removing? And then if they're doing one or more of those things, where are you going to dig a hole on your property to compensate for the stuff that, you know, the space that you're going to occupy now? Where are you going to remove some impervious surface on your property to compensate for what you're adding? And where on your property are you planting trees to compensate for the ones that you're removing?
Okay.
So we can step them through that process with an application, and it would look identical for either option.
And permit-by-permit, to me, sounds kind of like, it gives, you know, even under the model ordinance, given the no net loss, there is flexibility. You just have to figure out how to, as you say, make those trade-offs. But somehow, I like the permit-by-permit approach, and the appeal is also in the fact that you don't have to, again, update the ordinance every time FEMA comes out with new guidance, just refer to the FEMA guidance in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, and hopefully this will be stable into the new administration so it doesn't get totally changed all over again, because I know it's been a huge investment of effort on part of so many people, and it feels like it's a pretty good path.
Yeah, I mean, I have no idea where things are going. So, and it's kind of a, you know, it's been a moving target a bit.
Yeah.
FEMA staff are doing their absolute best to keep things from moving from one day to the next, but, you know, as information comes up, and they've been really good about, you know, when something new comes up, pivoting or adjusting to make sure that they're keeping communities informed and helping get new information out as it becomes available.
Question, in your experience in changes of administration, have you seen these type of deadlines change?
Yeah, a bit. Kind of, it just, it depends on what the focus is, you know, and FEMA staff are subject to whatever the, you know, the administration directs them to focus on, so.
But there are lots of other things going on.
Oh, yeah. Do you have any questions, Pat?
Just about the motion.
Did you get your questions answered? Okay.
It seems that Kentucky's chosen a pre-implementation compliance measure with, from the staff recommendations, it talks about option number two. Is there any reason not to put, that we are choosing option number two, or can things change in the next two weeks?
No, I think, I think that's probably a good idea. I left it open so that we could make sure that the board chooses the option that they want to recommend, recommend.
It seems like it should be in motion.
Yeah.
Ready for a motion? Because I do want a minute to like draft a new motion, or you got it?
Oh, I can get close, I think. I moved to.
That's why we have Vance, right? Almost long. Sorry, go ahead.
I moved to direct county staff to communicate that Benton County's chosen plan is option number two, the plan-by-plan option for the pre-implementation compliance measure and implementation needs to FEMA by December 1, 2024.
Second, the permit-by-permit, right?
You said plan-by-plan, permit-by-permit.
Yes.
Okay, second.
All in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Do we want to take a formal vote on requesting that they had the final Habitat Assessment Guidance Document and give us 12 months?
So I was, I was hoping that that would be.
Do we need another motion? Which, sorry, which part?
I would suggest that we put together a motion that, in terms of technical assistance for final compliance, says that we will be able to comply once the final Habitat Assessment Guidance Document is completed, and then 12 months beyond that.
Sounds good.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify with an aye.
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 Okay.
Got that second motion? Did she, did she get it?
Erica, did you get that? It's also on the recording.
Yeah, thank you. Vance dropped out a little there, but let me just read back what I have. Move that we will be able to comply once final habitat, sorry, Habitat Assessment Document is completed and 12 months beyond that. I may have missed something there.
Nope.
Okay. That's, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Erica.
Yeah.
Really quick, I just put some next steps up there as well. So December 1st, preparant submit formal response to FEMA by that date, and then beyond that, we'll be working towards implementation of option two, so the permit-by-permit process and getting, getting a reference into our code, and then continuing to identify and maintain communication with FEMA regarding technical assistance needs. They do have a request web link for communities to request technical assistance, and they have committed, FEMA has committed to providing communities with technical assistance, especially when they've been in good communication with FEMA agency regarding their especially when they've been in good communication with FEMA agency regarding their needs. So we'll be looking to see what, what we might need help on and submitting requests as needed. And then just continuing to review and comment on the pre-decisional documents for the draft environmental impact statement.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for being so thorough. And I'm grateful you have an internal working group to work with.
Royal buyer had said, great work. Why would that chase night last at night, Toby?
Thank you. Thanks for the time.
You got your cast of supporters.
And the flexibility this morning. Appreciate that.
Give us a quick break?
Yes, I'd like to take a quick break. Unfortunately, I'm reacting to, I can barely smell it, but I can't even, but my, I got a tickle in my throat, could feel it in my head.
From the last meeting and your and your request.
Yes.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that was. So Bailey, do you want to start with the first?
Sure. So the the first item here is authorized action line for landfill concerns. What I personally would would prefer to see than a phone line hotline is a form on the website where people can enter in what the issue is. They could use a submenu to select what the specific complaint is regarding. I think that this would be a better way to be able to capture all of the comments that the community has versus trying to take notes in numerous phone calls that I imagine would come. The it would make the reporting a lot easier because we'd have it all digitally as people enter them in. Also, it helped to distinguish between is this particular concern and comment something best handled by D Sac? Is this something regarding the expansion application that maybe should not go to D Sac since they haven't been charged with that, but instead maybe to Enrak or to the Planning Commission? It would help with the the annual Community Concerns Annual Report that we put together to have it all digitally in one place. Also, one centralized line isn't going to be able to provide the public with to to submit their complaints to each of the three entities, that being Benton County, Republic Services directly, and the Oregon DEQ. The Republic Services Complaint Line in particular, it's remains important for residents to 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 contact Republic Services directly and not just the county or just the Oregon DEQ, because what Republic Services can do when they receive that kind of information is enact on it sooner if they're hearing it directly from the community. I don't know if there are questions or comments.
I like that. I think it's a good compromise. I mean, I can see how it's helpful for a lot of different ways, like you said, being able to compile data more easily for the report, sharing it with other people. I know one other concern that we heard was about if someone wants to remain anonymous and if they're calling in, leaving a voicemail with personal information, how do we sort of scrub that to make it shareable with other people? So perhaps an online form would accomplish that task more easily.
Depending on how it's set up, I I think one of the questions was also how to, when it comes time for D Sac to put together that annual report about complaints, how to ensure that these are separate incidents or the same incidents? Because if an individual is reporting to us and calling Republic and calling DEQ, it may end up looking like three different complaints. So I I think maybe what also bears some thought or discussion is how to ensure that each of the three entities have very similar reports, reporting mechanisms, so you can more easily tell whether it's one incident or multiple.
Yeah.
Because right now, it's it's pretty darn messy. I I certainly understand wanting to have one place to report, but you know, if some someone calls us on a Friday night, it we're not going to get the kind of action that you might need from Republic to fix.
Yeah. Yeah, likewise. This will make it, I think, a little bit easier to to look at. You know, we may have 200 people making complaints from the community over the course of the year, but if you get deeper, maybe it's not 200 people, maybe it's 200 individual complaints that originated from 40 people or something. I'm making those numbers up, but this would provide a little bit better way to cross check that.
Yeah, it would provide useful data and it would take less staff time than a telephone line.
So I guess my question is, what would it take to implement it?
I haven't been given training authorization to do web updates, but I think of like a Google form. I don't know if that's we have to ask IT, but those are real simple. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Great.
And would the plan be, so this is on our website, would we automatically or once a month send these to Republic?
Yeah, that's that's a good point. Up until now, I've only batched several months of complaints and sent them over to Republic at once, but I could start doing that more frequently. Yeah.
Well, this seems telephone is kind of fading as the instrument of choice. And so I think that for several reasons, that doesn't make any sense going forward and just more efficient and and actually capture here's what they said instead of transcription or so I think that's you're on the right track.
And also this provides the opportunity to auto forward immediately. I mean, we can work with IT, it can go directly to to your point. It's Saturday at 10 a.m. At least it gives whoever that emergency manager or something that is at Republic Service and DEQ.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that. Yeah.
That is a good option.
The second item, if we're ready to move on, request monthly fire watch bulletins. And I feel like this is perhaps more of a question about what's what we have in our franchise to, you know, requirements of of them, or maybe this question for the fire marshal from the Adair or whatever the closest fire station was there. I I would say for both number two and three, I don't have any objections to to having them provide that kind of information. But I don't know that it's something that we've asked for.
I feel like we've we've asked them about monitoring and cameras or infrared cameras. And the one gentleman said that they were something they were looking into.
I think the main most important thing here is for the Board of Commissioners to keep asking about the implementation of an infrared monitoring system and just don't don't let it fall off the table.
Yeah.
And then beyond that, and and not beyond having the cameras themselves, what are what are what is the protocol? If there's an alert, who does it go to? What's the response time, goal, that kind of thing? The other is again, probably a three-way conversation between the county, Republic, and Adair Rural Fire and Corvallis Rural Fire, because they're the likely first responders, about providing alerts to the county as soon as there's an event. And I'm pretty sure they probably do provide an alert to our emergency management folks, but just would like to know that.
We could have a conversation with Brian Lee and try to collect that data.
Yeah.
So and then the other, yeah, I don't know about monthly fire watch bulletins, but I immediate communication after an event is desirable. The post-incident reports, and I think that's something again that the fire marshal can request or that the Benton County Rural Fire District Board could request.
That should be standard.
Yeah, yeah.
When you roll what you did.
Absolutely.
That's already generated.
So I think again, it's our relationship with the rural with the Benton County Fire, I don't have the name quite right, Benton County Fire Board, Fire Response Board, Fire Defense Board.
The relationship with the sheriff and the manager is super strong. So
Great.
Not that they wouldn't answer your call, Bailey, but that's it does help.
Yeah. So I think that just having better clarity there about those lines of communication and making sure that the board is alerted, county management is alerted when when there's an event would go a long way.
This is, oh, sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, so what what exactly are we asking for at this point? Are we asking for staff to reach out to the Fire Defense Board or to Brian or or?
I think there are two things. One is the board. I'm going to be cheesy and say keeping the heat on Republic with respect to installing automated monitoring equipment.
Okay.
And letting the county know what the protocols are for responding to any alarm. And then the second is having Bailey or, you know, staff contact or work with Brian Lee to make sure that we have that contact with the fire response responders, the first responders, and that we can have access to those post-incident response reports.
Do we want to invite Brian Lee to a future work session or goal setting or even some representatives of the Fire Defense Board for a conversation if they're willing to come?
Eventually, definitely. I think it's premature until we know what data is available to us, so then we can analyze and then bring it to the board or make it into a report that we can collect.
The D Sac has also been discussing this topic and
Sure.
so there may be some recommendations that come from that.
I think that's an appropriate venue for discussion as well.
So as far as the board, keeping the heat on Republic Services, what's the best way for us to do that? Just bring it up from time to time? Should we write them a letter just stating that we would like to see that? Open to ideas?
It might be a it wouldn't hurt to have a letter actually just talking about implementing automated monitoring equipment. I think that's that.
We encourage them to do so or strongly encourage or, you know, acknowledging that we don't actually have the authority to force them to do it.
Correct.
I think that was discussed recently when Republic was here.
Yep.
Put something in writing, following up on our recent conversation and strongly encourage you to, especially before the next fire season, to have a system in place.
Okay, that sounds like a good idea. Who's going to take the lead on that letter?
Chair?
I could do it. I'd be happy to.
I I would have the chair do it if you still have time.
Oh, yeah. Okay. And I can I would definitely bounce it to to staff. Yeah.
And then we can bring it to a board meeting.
And if you're ready, I can move on to the next bullet point here, which is enforce the cap on garbage intake from outside. I sent a letter to Republic Services, email actually to Julie Jackson, and she had responded and said, it I so my my email to her was saying, you know, it appears that you were over the cap in 2023. Here's how many tons I show that you've accepted so far, leaving you X amount of tons to not go over the cap in 2024. Julie responded and said that there's a subsection five, does that sound right to you, that identifies certain streams of the waste stream that don't count towards that cap? Unbeknownst to me, that includes contaminated soils, which are, you know, by weight in particular, pretty big source of of waste that comes. So what I still need to find time to do is to go through and pull out those subsections. There'll be some other ones that aren't as significant in terms of keeping them under the the cap of 1.1 million tons. I believe sludge is another one, and of course, that's going to be also real heavy. So I feel confident that once I get a chance to go through and pull out those amounts, it'll show that in 2023, they were under the cap. So my apologies for blowing the horn on on this. It turns out that there were some exclusions that I didn't know about.
It's perfect sense. I'm trying to figure out some of the details. A question I had after the 2020 Labor Day fires, we got a lot of debris from the Cuff and Butte got a lot of debris. Would that be one of another one of the exemptions?
That's my understanding.
Yes. Yes, the franchise agreement specifically exempts disaster, forest fire, flooding, debris from the solid waste cap.
Makes sense.
This is a kind of information that would probably be very useful to be in a frequently asked question.
Yeah.
What constitutes, what are the exempt categories and what is the core for the purposes of the cap? And it could also point to the language that Vance has shared with us as to what the what our ability is to call out an infraction or violation of the cap.
I think that's only half of the equations, Anne. I think the other half, the presentation is how much waste in these categories, categories. So here's the definition, and here is the tonnage in various categories, so that there's some context to those definitions.
I think that that would be very useful. One of the things that has come clear to me, however, over the last period of time, is that we don't get monthly reports from anyone. And Bailey, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that you have to request the information from DEQ because Republic reports to DEQ and not to us what those volumes are. And so that's kind of cumbersome, and it would be wonderful if we actually got information at the same time that DEQ did or because otherwise, having a cap seems like
Yeah.
a token.
Especially since it's quarterly that those are reported.
Yeah.
I can ask Republic about that, too.
Yeah, and Republic's data is better because it includes those it break the breakout of special waste, et cetera, whereas the DEQ number just lumps it all together.
Sort of that side conversation, you said FAQ, we can add add that to the existing FAQ that's on our website as because we have the data from the other sources of
Yeah. Sounds like a good plan.
And then as far as getting back about the actual tonnage, do we want to have Bailey come back to another to a future meeting so that we can all like a public setting so that we have it out there versus just like an email that we read and say, okay, great?
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. But I, you know, what would be useful, more useful is to just say, have some quarterly trend line data and and so we can see what the proportions are of that special waste versus the the counted waste versus the there's the third category. And I don't remember what the daily cover. So, yeah.
So I assume that'll probably take a little bit of time to figure that out.
Yeah. Yeah. But perhaps it could be made a lot much faster process if Republic can report things directly to me.
Sure.
Yeah, and I I guess I'm a little confused. I think that once upon a time, they did direct more report report more directly to us when Gordon was in in your role, Bailey, but I just don't know. But he seemed to have a really good handle on that kind of volume information back when. So it may be that they did previously.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I, you know, I just don't remember the I don't know the frequency.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's good.
So we're gonna you guys are gonna add the
Yeah.
that to the existing FAQ.
We'll work together on that one.
Okay.
And Bailey, no need to apologize. I mean, we're trying to figure this out, find out where the holes are, plug them. And so you're you're doing fine.
If there's no other questions, I can hit five and six.
Mm hmm.
Okay. So on the methane and greenhouse gas, again, a lot of emails going back and forth at that goal set of the information sharing presentation, there was a slide on the data I shared with you all that there were there are just too many methodological and assumption concerns to take both sides. Our greenhouse gas emissions, that data was altered. And then the explanation directly from Carbon Mapper on the data. That aside, there's no question that there is that they detected methane emitting. So putting any extrapolations, I think it's a great tool. And I had a wonderful conversation with the she is a she focuses on the waste stream and municipal dumps. I'm sorry.
Did you have a conversation with?
I forgot her name. Oh, Carbon Mapper.
Carbon Mapper.
Yeah. So the Carbon Mapper is is the is the nonprofit. They do flybys, quick synopsis of the email. They did three flybys over Coffin Butte. 16 samples were taken. All 16 showed a plume. Again, putting the data aside, only one of the 16 did they have enough confidence in to publish the actual data. Does not mean it's not happening. It just means that they didn't have the methodological confidence to publish that information. So there was one. Yes, exactly. And so, great. And and if I were to describe that and said, okay, putting that one aside or so shop highlighted that one, even though we can't extrapolate it just because of statistical confidence, doesn't mean it's not happening.
Yeah, we know it's happening.
It's happening.
To what extent is the
Correct. And to highlight, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's there. And so
It was happening in Florida. And no one in development. So if you have organic matter.
It's going to happen. And that's why in the email, I showed there's, you know, Kelso, Washington, Arlington is a good example, as big as that is, they didn't have any they couldn't find, say this specifically, there was not enough statistical confidence even at Arlington to give that data point, but it doesn't mean there's not a plume there. So it's a really cool map. I had the conversation was great. It's a great tool. We just need to describe it accurately. And the kind of, I think, five and six on the bullet points kind of merged together. The offer is still open to meet with VNEX and to kind of come together with a a story we can both agree on. I thought that was a great outcome of BCTT, Benton County Talks Trash, can get people in the room, how can we describe this? So and also in the email I shared, they're doing a great job of reaching out to our federal legislative representatives at Movingville. So I just want to comment on that. If there were any questions, again, and Mr. Reckland sent an email late last night, multiple pages. I just don't have I didn't have the I didn't I just didn't have the time to read it all.
I want to say that I appreciate the fact that you're highlighting that there's no dispute that there's a significant plume. There's no dispute that there's a significant amount of methane as a greenhouse gas emerging from the landfill. And the basic physics, you know, the basic formula for calculating that volume is sound. But the the question is the input data, the parameters that 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 are being used to characterize it as as VNEX has, and that it's the the folks at Carbon Mapper were not particularly comfortable using their data in that way because of the lack of confidence that you mentioned and because it was not a continuous monitoring. And and so there were extrapolations, as you said, that the Gaal Carbon Mapper was not comfortable with. So I think what I'd just really like our community members to understand is that we're not disputing the facts, but we'd be much I'd be much more comfortable with a range, for instance, Coffin Butte landfill is emitting from, we say, this volume to this volume. We don't know what the it is with certainty, but what we do know is that Carbon Mapper is planning on doing more of this work and better data is coming. And we also know that our federal delegation is asking for more regular monitoring, and so we will be able to get on the same page. But the fact that we have a range of estimates of greenhouse gas emissions shouldn't keep us from working together collaboratively and moving forward because fighting over a number doesn't make any sense. It it doesn't get us anywhere.
I guess my next question, based off of that, is, okay, so when we do have a range, what do we do with that information? So we still don't have authority for Benton County to do anything about it. But as you mentioned, our state and federal partners are becoming more involved. Sarah Gelson Blue had mentioned she was drafting some legislation. Hopefully that goes somewhere. I'm not entirely sure what depth or level it is. But this sounds like something that we can that we can champion to the higher ups because it just seems like, like, what 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 do we do with the information? What does Benton County do other than say, well, this isn't great, you know?
Absolutely. And my and my email to all of you, and that gets to the fundamental question of authority. Who is in charge of this? And how can we put the heat on, as you said previously, and to move this up that this is happening? Specific numbers aside, this is happening, but the public also recognizing what is our authority, what is not our authority, and making sure that attention is given to the right entity, regardless, you know, depending upon the level of government, to take action. We can't necessarily do specific actions on a specific question, who is in charge, and how can we, as a community, affect it change? And I just want to highlight, which, yeah, it was really great. Again, doing Carbon Mapper, they did, they just sent a satellite into space, literally, and hopefully that can get more specific data over an actual trend, like what had happened over a week, not just three flybys. I shouldn't say just, instead of three flybys, let's look at this for a week. Let's look at Burlington for a week. Let's look at Clean Lane and see what the differences are as a region. So I'm looking forward to that. That'd be really, really cool.
Lane County's $116 million facility mainly trying to keep organics out of the landfill.
It is going to use anaerobic digestion to capture organic material to turn it into syn gas. It'll then either be turned back, used to fuel vehicles, or they can turn it into electricity and and use it that way. But it'll be a pretty there, you know, after all of the Clean Lane facilities built and assuming that it's going to work the way that they've described, it will be a very significant reduction in greenhouse gases, both by preventing the methane that would otherwise only some of which would get captured, but also just capture it all directly there. It'll reduce the volume of their garbage quite a bit as well, which will extend the landfill, shorten that landfill that much longer.
What I think of the Pacific composting facility, went through that process, does that release less greenhouse gases?
I think it probably releases a little bit more a composting operation than an anaerobic digester because
No, compared to just the landfill and
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You know, there's still some CO2 as a byproduct of the compost, but it it prevents the organic material from reaching that anaerobic state where then the methane gets created more.
I remember that discussion on composting, and I think they have more capacity there with need more customers for the finished product.
Yeah.
Which seems like we have to figure out how to encourage that.
I think they're trying to give it away at the farmer's market.
I saw that. I saw that. So I just wanted my my last comment is on number six, the offer still stands. If if folks want to meet and have a conversation, then that's a healthy conversation. The offer still stands. So. that's a healthy conversation. The offer still stands. So I hope that afforded you the opportunity to discuss this six, and we'll, we'll get back to you on, as we proceed with the action items that we identified.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Maura, you're up.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
In your packet today is a draft proposed schedule for the Board of Commissioners for calendar year 2025. It contains all of our regularly scheduled meetings, as well as some standing conferences that you all attend, and the department head meetings that you have. In the checklist, I noted five regularly scheduled meetings, leadership, goal setting, et cetera, where there is a conflict with either a holiday or anticipated conference dates. The first one is the January leadership meeting, which would, you know, be scheduled typically for the first Wednesday, and that is the New Year's Day holiday. So I was suggesting that perhaps we reschedule that to the afternoon of, of Thursday the second, following the oath of office ceremony and reception in the morning. That would be the first one. The second one is for the, the first Tuesday meeting in March. That meeting would typically occur on Wednesday, March 5th. But anticipating that the Commissioners would attend the NACO Legislative Conference in Washington DC, as you all typically do, I was suggesting that we reschedule the, I'm sorry, the meeting on the fourth, March 4th to March 6th. So that would be the second one. And the, the leadership team is also affected by that. So it is the fourth and the fifth. The first Tuesday business meeting and the Wednesday leadership team meeting. So I was suggesting that the legis, the leadership team be moved to Wednesday, March 12th. And then for November goal setting, goal setting, I'm recommending that that be moved. It would normally fall on the second Wednesday, which in 2025 will be Veterans Day, which is a county holiday. So my recommendation be a move goal setting to Monday, November 10th. So one day earlier. And then, excuse me. Lastly, holding the third Tuesday in November meeting on November 17th, just based on the historic scheduling of the, the AOC Conference, we would have a conflict there. So I would be recommending moving that meeting from the 18th to the 17th, which is something we've typically, typically done in November to accommodate the AOC Conference.
Which we are doing next week.
Yep.
Yes. So those are the five exceptions that fall outside, you know, sort of our regular planning and, and scheduling. And so I'm bringing this forward for your consideration.
Yes. So going back to, let's start back in January.
Okay.
The board meeting on a Thursday. What is the, why would we do that on a Thursday instead of just the next Tuesday, which would be the first Tuesday?
That's actually a leadership team meeting. I'm proposing moving the...
Leadership team.
Right.
Got it.
From Wednesday to Thursday.
That makes more sense because I'm like, why don't we have five meetings a month? Okay. So that's, that works for me.
None of the regular, none of the regular board meetings would be impacted. You've got holidays there.
And then what was the next one, March?
Well, on that one, I do have a trip planned and, oh, I think coming back on that day. On the leadership team. I think that's, that's a number of people scheduling. So I'm not saying you should move it on this name. I will not be there.
You can always fill it in.
Okay.
Okay. The next one was in March?
Next one is in March. There's actually two that are impacted in March. Typically, we would have the first Tuesday meeting on March 4th, in this case, followed by the leadership team on the 5th. But these are the dates that, that NACO has published for the Legislative Conference, so we know those are firm. So I was proposing that the board meeting be held on Thursday, the 6th.
That would be fine for me. I'm just thinking about the last time I traveled and hearing about lots of people who are traveling and all the flights that are getting canceled and just wondering, are we even going to make it home by that time?
Is it ambitious?
Is it? Yes. And if we're getting home at like 11:00 midnight and then having a meeting at 8, 9:00 AM. I mean, I can do it.
Well, I haven't checked in on the schedule, but I know last time I did this, seen legislative staff or legislators, there are more Oregon Commissioners in DC. Something like last time it was Monday. And like I say, I haven't really checked the schedule, but I could see maybe adding an extra day so that when all the other Commissioners go back home, there's some staff slash elected availability.
Yeah. What historically CFM schedules stuff for us? Is it during the actual, I can't remember.
It depends. Last time it was mostly after. And that was partly because of the fact that our delegation was in the state at the time of the conference. They were on recess. But we had better access the day after the conference. So...
And that's what, two years ago.
It happened as well?
Schedule, I think NACO was done Monday. Oregon folks ran around the hill on Tuesday.
Yep. I mean, do we need, I, I'm not sure. I mean, that's still a couple months, two, three months from now, but what about canceling it? I don't, obviously if we have some big time sensitive item, we not want to cancel.
You're better off having a date on the calendar on hold and then canceling it than, rather than not having something on the calendar.
I'm not opposed. I know it would be wild, but like, can we switch like the leadership meeting that I can hold, like on the 7th, and then just move, can you have a board meeting and a goal setting meeting in the same week?
Seems like you would, we could, but it just seems like you...
Lot of work.
We could just do it all in one week.
And I was going to suggest, do you potentially want to combine those two on the 11th?
Can you do that?
Yeah, sure. No reason why not. The goal setting is more of a work session.
How do you set up the room?
Yeah.
How we're born decides.
Has to be that.
I think people will be much more refreshed on the 11th if it's a long...
But like Zane said, I mean, do we want to leave it there as just, just in case? And then we should always cancel it later?
It's just the date after the conference is rough. I agree. I'd really prefer Friday, wouldn't you, like on a, just because it, once again, if flights get canceled or...
Or if we schedule, well, but then if we're, you know, maybe the same thing. If we get scheduled the CFM on the 6th, then we're coming back late. And then we might run into the same issue if it's a Friday. We just don't know yet.
Yeah. I would just say include a regular board meeting with the goal setting meeting following week.
Maybe even split the day.
Yep.
Goal setting in the morning, or business in the morning, goal setting in the afternoon, something like that. Yeah. So combine those two.
Okay.
And then just follow on the 12th with the leadership team meeting in the afternoon. Okay. And then the next one would be just the goal setting meeting in November due to, due to the Veterans Day holiday.
Having the date before.
Having it on Monday, unless people, the only thing is whether people might want to make a longer weekend out of that. We could potentially move it to Wednesday, depending on what your preference is.
And that's really far out from now, so I, I don't know.
I know. And the annual conference for AOC is the 18th through the 20th of November.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's my estimate based on the... Yeah.
Yes, I prefer having the meeting or board meetings the week of AOC. I prefer having it before. It's, it's hard to try to jump on a virtual meeting when you're there. And some of us have different meetings scheduled in the morning and some of us don't. So...
So the, the meeting that week would be on the 17th?
Yes. Does that sound okay with you, Pat?
Sure.
The goal setting meeting on the Monday, the 10th?
Yes.
And certainly, and you know, we can, in the future, you know, move these around as things come up. And if it turns out that, you know, our alternatives aren't working out the way we hope, but at least we, this will establish the calendar and, and have the dates on hold. So we'll proceed with then populating the calendar and getting all that information out.
I think, I just want to say thank you, Maura, because it's wonderful to have that year ahead look and to try and get things organized and have some predictability. The first couple of years I was with the board, we didn't have enough staff capacity to really do that. And it's much more efficient to do it in advance. The only other thing we talked about in the past was scoping out a couple of weeks when we, maybe you wouldn't have board meetings. So you, you all could plan vacations and know nothing was happening. But maybe you can get to that down the road. I know that there are some boards that don't meet at all in August, for instance, or that don't meet the last two weeks of July and August, or just things to think about.
Sure.
I think that was it. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Maura.
Thank you. So on to county administrator goals, so that I can enter them into NeoGov and have it stop nagging me.
It will never stop nagging.
No, it's going to start nagging Nancy next.
Telling me that I'm past due on some training that I need to know how to pump gas.
That's strategic, strategic communications.
Maybe. That gas one, though, kept bothering me for quite a while.
Oh, really? I never got that one.
Oh, yeah. You have to learn how to pump the gas.
Yeah.
Do you want me to start?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, obviously, you know, my number one goal is, you know, leaving late at night tonight and settling a collective bargaining units contract. So that is, of course, that's been the new normal in our life for the last month. And so beyond that, because that's what organizational leadership is, is number one was Civic Plus is going to be launched soon. And in full transparency, we want to be able to measure its effectiveness. So it's a pretty big platform that we're, we're going to be rolling out. And I think that hopefully by new, the time of my review, we'll have real data to look at if this has been something that's been accomplished. What's the community feeling about it? Where do we want to tweak it? Things like that. And I think that would be a good goal setting for specifically in the VOC. How do people feel about that?
Hey, could you speak to what your role would be in that? Like what, what your hands-on parts would be?
Well, I mean, I think that's, hands-on is kind of difficult. I mean, you, you participate in meetings and you lead and you look for analytics, and then you work with your team to actually look and see if it's, if it works as well. So, you know, I mean, that's the type of work that, that you would do. Actually doing the manual work? No, I wouldn't do the manual work.
No, thank you. That's what I meant. It's just kind of a, more of an idea.
No, I mean, there'll be a lot of problem solving. There'll be a lot of decision making. You know, there'll be a lot of listening and, you know, and then adapting to where we need to do and when we have to work with the software provider to do that. Will there be an extra cost to more customize it for the Board of Commissioners? So it's, it's pretty, yeah.
It also involves several different staff, correct?
Oh, of course, yeah.
PAO and board, board staff, Maura and Erica. And so that's coordinating the entire piece of work.
I'm sorry. Did you say that you emailed us this?
No.
Okay. So for as part of the goal, I mean, do you have like a date or is it just by the next? Is that typically how we get our...
Yeah.
...the next?
Usually it's a SMART goal, so it does have some sort of measurable and time-bound element to it. So maybe it's to evaluate the Civic Plus launch for effectiveness and any changes needed by maybe September 1st, so that it's prior to the actual evaluation date.
Yeah. A little look at the analytics, see if it's working, complaints, user, you know, user friendliness, if this is, is the best way that we want to move forward. Because it is a big shift.
Sure.
It's a huge shift, you know, so... Do we need more staff, right?
We have pretty, we've had recommendations from other jurisdictions that they've used it. It has worked well.
Yeah, that's my understanding. See, Maura, nodding.
As part of the invitation for bid process, we did contact vendors references. And they were, they really did get a lot of feedback from the public, which means that, you know, there were more of any public concern particularly. But it really streamlined the process of creating a better product. I think, I think ultimately...
And that requires training and reemphasizing the product, that this is the way we're going to use these things. That takes a lot of work with our directors and those folks who present in front of you to be able to, to use this platform. Because it is, it'll be a lot better than laser fiche. So... Okay. The second one I was going to talk about is the upper realization. I can't speak today. Started the day early today, on the Crisis Center. So what parts, there are parts that we have to think about is the union contract that has to be negotiated in order to, I believe we're bringing on 38 staff, something along those lines. It ranges from 38, it ranges to 40. That's going to take the new budget numbers, creating a salary structure, onboarding, and then most likely it's going to be about six weeks of training that we will also have to work on and actually look, you know, monitoring the state legislative priorities as well while we move that forward. Trying to open on time is a heavy lift, as you all know. So a part of a lot of work that you do as a county administrator is making phone calls, tracking down permits, trying to lift a lot of the weight off of the, the folks who are doing the work. So our goal is still to open in April. There's a lot of work that we can do with our PIO and creating communications plan that allows us to really highlight the Crisis Center as, I think it'll be third in the country that is built like this. Some of you have taken the tour as well. There's a lot of coordination that needs to set up more tours to people who would be very interested in. And I especially look at the city of Corvallis because they get to drive by it every day. And I've even heard a few people say, ooh, it's a beautiful building. So they're starting to look beautiful. So I think that that's going to be really difficult. I will say the heavy lift will be on staffing. As you know, we already are really, really low on Q and Q MHCs.
Pete.
What?
Pete.
Okay, Pete. Sorry, Pete. You guys have to understand, we worked all weekend. We've been working weekend. So, you know, really working around that and probably creating more recruiting efforts. I'm not saying we're going to do billboards, but it, we're looking at job fairs. This is something the county hasn't done before, really, to try to capture those folks as well. This is something the county hasn't done before, really, to try to capture those folks as well.
Uh, indeed. My impression is that the recruiting efforts already started.
Well, we haven't budgeted for them really yet, so I would say we're behind. So this is one of the reasons why it's in my goal setting, is that it's going to need a hyper-focus. Hopefully, with the activities that are going on this week, we can then reset our focus on this. We are thinned out right now, no question about it. So even just finding the space for when we do hire to these folks, how that's going to work, we are also exploring contracting out some of those employees. If we are not successful with our recruitment, we may have to, we are looking at, we just had a meeting the other day on possibly having to contract as well to complement the recruitment effort. And then they have to be trained for six to eight weeks. So where are they training? So it's really, it's a lot of work with Paul and that this is, you know, and operationalizing it all, so.
Yep, hiring the folks before you have the building to house them is.
Got to train them.
A challenge.
Yep. So there's a lot of pieces and there's going to be a lot of new funding and new, you know, we're going to have to work very, very closely with our new CFO who's starting in a week. And these are the type of things that, that have to go through meeting by meeting through CIS, all type of work that we need to get everybody on board, so.
Just to clarify, when we talk about budgeting, it's not that we need to, like, oh, no, where are we going to find the money to pay these people? Because we expect to be reimbursed by insurance and other.
Yep.
Methods that are going to be coming out of the general.
But for that six to eight-week training period, there's no revenue generated. So definitely need to budget for.
For it, we're going to eat that.
Exactly, for both the recruitment and all of that hiring and training period.
Yep.
It's not insignificant.
So bringing on the new CFO, working with Ricky, working with April, working with Damian to create that budget, as well as Rick Crager, to be able to present to you a strategy of how we're going to be working towards it. So I really think the first quarter of '25, you'll be seeing a lot of focus on the Crisis Center.
Having this type of facility is one of the priorities that came out of the Oregon Health Authority Facilities Assessment for Facilities Needed for Behavioral Health. And I think that it's likely the legislature will put something towards this in the next session. And I think that one of the things that Damian and April need to keep an eye on is having to make sure, making sure that they also put in some startup funds for staffing, not just for the facilities themselves, because that's obviously going to be a crunch. You're only, only bringing in revenue once you're up and running.
Yep. And then my third goal, if we're okay with the Crisis Center, is really, it sounds like a soft goal, but it's not. I mean, we are going to be, we are going to settle this contract and we are going to have to change as a workforce. So with adding on and onboarding a change manager, one of the outcomes that I will be tasking this change manager, who have an emphasis on equity, diversity, and inclusion, is to start looking at outcomes, outcomes of workplace culture. I think that it's elevated, it's a tremendous amount of focus that we need to assess as a full team. And I do believe that, you know, a very, very important part of the community, of the county administrator, is to really build capacity and teamwork and team-building and communication. And the work we're doing with Gallup is great, but there's more work to be done. And that's going to require some strategic partners, not just from our directors that do report up to me and as well as Rick Crager, but also where we're going to be able to look and measure that. So I think that if there was a shift with the change manager, maybe one of the first priorities will be more looking at our own workforce as well to begin with and be able to see how they're tracking it, adding more tools to the toolbox, as you can say.
Do you have a timeline for when that individual might come on board?
Human resources is not, is, we're all thinned out right now. So my hope is by advertising it by the end of the year, which would be December of 2024. I think recruitment will take through January. Government takes time to get the right person. It's nice that we have a consultant on board, which is our, we will, we will get back to her, Sean. But our EDI consultant that we use towards creating this role, that again, this role was really vetted, interviewing all of our directors as well of what we need to do to make not only this person successful, but how we can actually measure change, equity, diversity, inclusion, sustainability, and transparency. These are all these tools that will help. So it's a lot on one person. So really, it's going to, it's going to take a lot of work to roll it up, but I, I think that that would be a good goal.
Knowing that we're, you know, just in a really busy time right now and we have a little bit more time to work on this, do we, you know, we've, we've learned past lessons about the EDI coordinator and setting them up for success, like you said. Do we have that sort of fleshed out yet about the scope of their job and the pointing them in the right direction and expectations?
Well, I mean, that's going to come out a lot with the interviews and the job description in the interviews. One of the reasons that the job was elevated into a change manager as opposed to a coordinator is for them to have that authority to kind of work through this, work through all the directors. And future state, I'm hoping that maybe by the recommendations, that, you know, we will have somewhat of a project manager model to really be able to help these departments build capacity. They always ask for project managers. We're always, you know, doing other work, but that would possibly be a future goal. But again, you have to hire the right person as well and be able to see what they can achieve and not achieve.
So the emphasis is on rebuilding internal teams and trust and focusing on outcomes of county services. So that sounds like some of the dashboarding and the kinds of metrics that we've been wanting and asking for from different departments. This person will have.
The skill set.
The skill set, the technical capacity to help department leadership to tell their stories.
Yep.
And to then also be able to tell the community over time how we are improving and for us to be able to continuously improve.
Right. So I would think they would be reporting up quite often to the VOC and really giving you the right metrics, as well as our leadership team of what we need to be tracking, so.
And that person would be on board by March?
I mean, hopefully sooner, hopefully sooner.
But yeah, I would say, I would put it in March and, and, you know, if it's sooner, that's great.
Yeah, hey, look at that, how do you do?
First quarter, first quarter, how's that sound?
That's March, March 31st.
Yep.
Okay. I will do some words in the thing and then get them back. Should I send them back to everyone? Yeah. Okay.
And this, sorry, so once again, the timeline, your reviews are in October, so it's, it's.
September, yeah, like mid-September, yeah. Now, again, that's a human being, you know, people come and go. Hopefully, we won't have a problem, we'll hire the right person, but.
Yeah.
That can happen, so.
Well, and I mean, in the time I've been here as a commissioner, I think all, you know, I mean, Joe, there's always stuff that happens that's outside of your control.
Like this.
Many of Joel's, Joe's goals, you know, understandably, kind of the timeline got changed and stuff, so.
But we can show progress.
Yeah.
We can show progress and give some achievements along the way, so, yeah.
So one other question, the change management goal is related to what was previously the EDI-focused goal from last year. I don't have your goals from last year in front of me, but there was one other that was not quite complete. Isn't that the case? I don't remember what it was. I didn't bring my folder with me.
It was the EDI coordinator.
It was just that one?
Mm-hmm.
But there was another one? You don't have those in front of you?
I don't remember, I, I don't remember.
I should have looked at Vance. I'm not looking at you, Vance.
And.
Not paying attention. What? You look like a deer in headlights.
You woke him up.
I woke him up. I know. That was funny. That was funny. Just wanting to double-check so we don't have these things dangling.
Okay, let's see, so the other was develop and implement, restructure of EDI position, and present health services restructure organization recommendation.
It's done.
For approval.
It's done, but we haven't approved it yet.
Right.
Yeah.
And then in collaboration with the sheriff, complete process for submitting request for assessment to National Institute of Corrections for Benjy.
And that was completed.
Yeah. Okay.
So, yep.
Good. Good. And really that health services restructure is part of the operation, operationalization.
Operationalization, I am having a hard time with that word today.
Also, I mean, it's, it's a foundational element.
Yep.
So, okay, I'm comfortable with that. I will draft those up into some sort of SMART-like language and put them.
I mean, there's always larger goals.
Oh, of course.
You know, but I mean, again, we have a new CFO coming in. That's a senior, important person coming in. And I'm really, you know, hoping, you got to spend a lot of time.
Yep.
With leaders to build them up and get, and, and work that. And we're going to be rolling right into budget season, we're already in it. So, yeah, there's, there's, Benton County's hopping right now.
And he's, Greg is coming next month.
He's coming, he's coming on the 18th, so he will, his first day at work, he will be, he will be here. He will, he has some signature authority, so I'll introduce him to you at the first public meeting, and that will be his first day, so.
The other thing to let you all know is that we did have a discussion scheduled for today about budget priorities for next year. But, and we also had on the docket a review of our legislative priorities. But we deferred both of those just because we wanted to keep this meeting short so that Rachel could get back to the mediation.
I have to get back to mediation.
So look for those at the December meeting. And at the December meeting, Gabe will join us as well. And we'll also look over all of the committee assignments, et cetera, in preliminary ways so that you all can make decisions. And then you can finalize those in January after I'm gone. So, yeah.
But now forgotten.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I just wanted to ask real quick too, if there was anything else that any other commissioners want. Not to, not that I want to add a whole bunch of stuff on top of it, but just, you know, the chance for commissioners to talk about adding anything or changing anything or just as it.
To me, these hit some of the highest priorities right now that fall squarely within Rachel's purview. Because there's, as you said, so many other things that are really other people's goals, all of the facilities completion, for sure, that's Gary's area. But the, the whole issue of transparency and ease of interaction with the county is definitely a huge topic. And we've gotten a lot of public feedback over the last few years about challenges. So the other one, the Crisis Center operationalization, it's just, that, that's a huge reputational issue and a huge functional issue that we just need to get right. And the change management, I think, is foundational to everything and to rebuilding after these negotiations and to moving the county forward in a way that provides for more accountability and in terms of equity and diversity, inclusion, and in terms of value of services rendered. So I'm comfortable with that, but you guys are the continuing commissioners, so if there's something missing.
If I can think of, just.
I think, keep it short and sweet and be, and be easy to.
I need five minutes.
Put things on, but seems like it covers a.
Okay.
Fair amount of territory. I'm.
Good.
I'm fine.
I, Rachel was needed.
I have an urgent need. Excuse me for a minute, I apologize.
Are we still, we can go, are we still in executive session or?
Yes.
Okay.
I just need, it's just urgent. Five minutes, please.
Yeah, five minutes.
Thank you.
Let's call a five-minute break. Mics back on. And the next item up is updates. I would suggest that we keep them, you know, concise so that we can then go into executive session and move on.
Do you want to reverse the order and do exec session?
Let's, let's just do updates and move through them. And Rachel's ready to go, she's got her list, so.
I have my list. Obviously, all our schedules have been shifted around the last few weeks and I thank a lot of you for being flexible. Obviously, the CFO search is completed. Greg Munn will be starting on November 18th. The state, we have had state CFM check-ins for what our legislative priorities will be, which you have been updated on. We, most of us all attended the SMMP kickoff meeting in Salem, a great tour of the Crisis Center, which two of my commissioners, and we are, have been having daily strike planning meetings with all of our department heads. Some community engagement is, I had lunch with our constituent, Marge Pop, and I attended the fair volunteer dinner at the fairgrounds. We've had multiple Gallup manager trainings since the Gallup research poll gave us some data and some upcoming meetings, of course, there's more strike planning. We have, we are ready with our EOC. And we have the Nate 4H Awards Dinner, pending what happens this week. And I will be attending the AOC conference for one day this year. It's just, normally I would go for a little bit longer, but it's just that operationally, we need to be present and here. And that's my updates. Any questions? I mean, I saw you at half of these meetings.
Actually, wait, so the 4H Awards Dinner, we're, you may go or we may actually cancel the whole thing?
They, we are moving ahead with it.
Okay, either way.
Mm-hmm. We have it covered.
That's tonight.
No, it's the 13th.
It's Wednesday at 6:00.
Tomorrow, yeah.
Which I may sleep.
Tomorrow. Tuesday today.
Yeah. And so who, one of you is going to?
I was planning to go.
Okay. Because usually don't they ask the chair to say some stuff? Okay.
Just to help hand out the awards.
Yeah. Just making sure we have that covered.
Okay.
That's tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Nancy?
Well, I can keep it short. I do a lot of stuff, I got re-elected.
Nancy.
I go to a lot of meetings, which you guys do too. Yeah, I hope there's nothing really burning I need to go into right now.
I just have one caveat, I did get to spend the evening at the Board of Elections. And they did a real fantastic job. Really, it's a, you have a really great group of professionals who are, have done just a terrific job. Even the kind of temporary help they get in, it just, it was just really impressive watching in the focus and just the expediency, it just was, they take their job very, very seriously. I think it's good for everybody to know that, so.
I was impressed with, there's a core group that's year-round and then a whole bunch of volunteers and some paid folks that are at it. And just very professional and when I was up there, it seemed like passing candy out.
And they thank you for the lasagna that you got bought them all.
I did have to get in on lasagna.
Thank you to whoever arranged that.
And I think that's a great idea, just to show they were supported and.
Yeah.
Busy day and having food delivered is, I think was a great idea.
Okay, your update?
Couple weeks ago, interesting, I found out it's twice a year. The area commissions on transportation, the, the whole group, and there were Oregon. on transportation, the, the whole group, and there were Oregon Transportation Association people there, and it's a four-hour meeting, and I was two hours late because of information sharing, we had a lot of information to share, but it was still worthwhile. A lot of, one transportation project I'm focused on is getting Fallowth Boulevard more efficient. We've got those four stoplights and on a state highway and a lot of commuters, and I think there's a real opportunity without, as well, so, oh, we need two more lanes. Well, that'll never happen for various reasons, but what we can do is smart signals, one thing that I got out of that was sense that it's a loaded highway truck, maybe keep the signal green so that he's, that they're, they're not stopping at every light heading, well, either direction, but especially east, heading towards High 5, and it's, that would be good for the environment and, and there's also safety improvements, crosswalks, better bike and bed pass in that corridor, that might be a separate project, but I think with extremely expensive projects, heading, landing on ODOT's desk, I think this is one that relatively modest price tag, it can be phased, and so I was able to get some information on that and try to, Roger Nyquist stole my lunch, and so I got him to, literally, because I was late.
Ah, okay.
Had my name on it. But I'm using that to try to get his support, so it's, Lynn Benton Lincoln is the local act, and get his support for that project, even though it's not directly affecting Lynn County. Crisis Center, a great tour, I was impressed that they had a real roof on, can't see the roof, but it was, it was dry inside, and they were planning on keeping it that way, so.
All covered in plastic, which, I don't know if you heard, one guy did it all himself, climbing around with giant sheets of plastic, that took him a few hours, I went, holy cow!
I would think, yeah, that's amazing.
But I, I think the permanent roof is on, so that's the main thing, and then the plastic to try to keep things out. Last Thursday, I went to the Third Alamo Valley Broadband at Knife River Training Center. If you haven't been there, I'd like to know how many acres they have included in this bubble.
Amazing.
Acres, so they can move dirt and do things in the winter with dry soil and more realistic. It's put on by Alarica and, well, well organized. Found out ODOT has a, has a communication person, I did not know, I had a lot of ODOT folks with transportation meetings. And then just the various players on the broadband effort, and $700 million from the feds to Oregon in trying to figure out how best to use that, and different jurisdictions are supposed to submit applications, and I was impressed, well, is this a $5,000 hookup in this one house, or is it a $20,000? And there's two or three times more cost than even the $700 million, and apparently there's a $300 million match, so it's almost a billion dollars for Oregon. Sounds like a big number, but when hookups are 5, 10, 20,000 and up, there has to be some prioritization. I think that's enough.
Doke. Well, I just wanted to talk through some of the upcoming events. I'm going to go to the WIN Expo tonight over on campus, the Economic Development Event, that's from 5 to 8. I'm going to pop over there as soon as I can and head home. The 4H Awards Dinner tomorrow. Also tomorrow is the investiture for Judge Smith at 3:00 PM at the courthouse. You going to be there?
Yeah.
Good. Then I'll be out on Thursday for the second day of the strategic planning for the Youth Development Office for the state, and then at that evening, the Philanthropic Achievement Awards for the Benton Community Foundation. And on Friday, I'm going to be participating in a juvenile justice summit that's being put on by the Oregon Judicial Department. I'm not exactly sure what that's going to be yet because it just popped onto my calendar, but it's either related to the Youth Development Office or to some of the AOC work that I've been involved with in the past. And then, because I wasn't able to make it on the Crisis Center tour the first time around, we are starting up a series of tours for different subsets of folks that are interested in the Crisis Center, as Rachel mentioned. So I'm going to be touring on December 12th, and we have, I think, already confirmed the sheriff, and I think DA Jocelyn will probably join us on that, and have reached out to our state elected officials as well. So that is, that's it for me.
One follow-up on the Corvallis Oldham path, as maybe even two weeks ago, there was rock, and I don't know if I've been able to actually do pavement.
Parts.
There has been some
I think so.
I haven't heard for sure. I know, I'm sure North Sandyham Babing would love to get this whole project off their list, so it has to be a relatively dry two or three days to do actual pavement. Sure, there used to Oregon leaders, but that's the, I think, to Merloa.
So, Pilkington? Yeah.
To Lucarellis segment.
Yep.
And there's a $1.5 million urban reduction grant, and maybe another one to do a study on the long midsection of the path, get to 30% design, which makes getting construction funding relative, which would be relatively easy.
I've gotten quite a few constituent comments about bike path and trail, people are excited about it, so I tell them yes, but again, it's just past the children's farm, and they'll say, well, it's a start.
Yeah. Full-time company.
Yeah. Yep, and I drove that stretch on Friday afternoon, and, yeah, the, all that work is happening, and it's exciting to see. Anything else for the good of the order? Oh, yes, we did have that one item, we had that funding item.
Do you want to, do you want to get commissioners?
No, I said I didn't have, okay, I can talk.
We can all talk, yes. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Thank you for
Thank you.
Okay, I'm looking for that email. Sorry, could have had it queued up.
Everybody was sent it this morning.
Me.
From Rachel. Afforded request from
There's a forwarded request from Eric Neiman, that the Lomah Inclusivity Committee is working on a Black History Month event for February 2025 that would take place at the Philomath Museum's Morland Gallery, and it's an evening program, 6 to 8:00 PM on February 12th, and the invitation has been extended to the Executive Director of the Oregon Black Pioneers to present that day, focus on Black women in Oregon history and, well, and beyond Oregon. And they are asking if the county can contribute some money towards that event, if Philomath is covering the honorarium for Speaker, but there is another $494 worth of expenses they are looking to cover and wanting to know whether Benton County can cover a portion of that. They are also looking to the Lynn Benton NWAACP to help cover a portion. So thoughts, discussion?
I'm assuming it's in our budget?
We have money in the budget.
I would be happy covering the whole thing, because I know the NWAACP tries to host their own events, and, you know, they've got a limited budget, so.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move to allocate $494 for, to the City of Philomath for the Black History Month celebration and to cover the expenses.
Lodging in mileage.
Lodging in, thank you.
And this would be coming out of our Warren, what we call it.
Yes.
Warren Fund.
Commissioner Fund.
Commissioner Discretionary Fund?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, please?
Somebody seconded it, yeah.
Oh.
Seconded?
Thank you. All in favor, please indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Erica, you were able to get that motion? I noticed Commissioner Wise was slowly losing her volume.
I, I did get that, thank you, Vance.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I would hope that it would be not just a City of Philomath event, but they could say it's a Philomath-Benton County event.
You can ask them to do that, sure.
Include our logo or something.
Yep, yep.
Sponsored by, yeah. Who do you, who will ask?
Maura. I will, he was in contact.
Or Rachel, yeah.
Yeah, this morning.
Awesome.
Five in the morning.
I mean, I know Eric doesn't
I was up, yeah.
Does a lot of the labor, so I don't want to make it seem like we're trying to overshadow his.
Oh, no, but co-sponsored by.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. And with that, we are finished with our regular session, and I am going to recess the regular session and enter executive session under ORS 192.6602D as a delay, and, and then we will return to regular session upon completion of this executive session.